Council, we'll call the minute order for the record. It is August 23rd, 2022 at 4:33 PM. We'll begin this afternoon's work session with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilwoman Burrow.
Here.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Here.
Councilman Borton.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here.
Mayor Simison.
Here. Next item up is adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
We have adoption of the agenda as published.
I have a motion second to adopt the agenda as published. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The ayes have it and the agenda is adopted. First item up is a consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
We have approval of the consent agenda and for the mayor to sign and clip to attest.
I have a motion second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The ayes have it and the consent agenda is agreed to. There are no items moved from the consent agenda, so we will move on to item 16, which is our Public Works, their Public Works Week sponsor proceeds donation. And we'll turn this over to Director McVeigh.
You're muted. Hit the little green or the little red button top right of the monitor, on the monitor. There you go.
Mayor and council, thank you. So I get to come in front of you today and not ask for money, which is rare, but actually give away money, which is really exciting. So we were able to bring back Public Works Week after a two-year hiatus due to COVID, and that was a really, really exciting thing. We really embrace Public Works Week because it allows us to highlight our public work staff and highlight the work that we do, which is often unseen, right? Because water and wastewater services are underground, out of sight, out of mind. So we really appreciate that opportunity to bring what we do to the community. So this year, we just brought back the expo because we weren't quite sure what would be going on with the world, but we had really good attendance and in Public Works, you know, we have a lot of scientists and engineers. So we have a very scientific method for determining attendance. It is based on the number of hot dogs that are eaten. So we anticipate we had around 750 people attend, which was really great turnout. As part of Public Works Week, we collect donations from our sponsors to help us offset some of the costs to the city. So I'd like to really quick acknowledge those sponsors on the record. We were able to collect $4,600 in total from the following list of sponsors: Advanced Control Systems, Bowen Collins and Associates, Brown and Caldwell, Civil Survey, HDR, Idaho Water Engineering, Jacobs, J.C. Constructors, JUB Engineers, Mountain Water Works, Treasure Valley Drilling, and Republic Services. It should also be noted that Republic Services generously donated the T-shirts that all the staff got to wear, which was over $1,000 in donated T-shirts. So at the end of the event, after we cover all of our expenses, each year, we are able to donate those extra donations to some organizations that are important to Public Works. And so that's what we're here to do today, to give some funds back to these important groups. So the first one that I would like to give is to our Parks Department. So if Director Sitaway could come up, we have a donation of $507.50 for the Care Enough to Share Scholarship Program. All right, and our second organization, also important to Public Works, is with our SWAC. So if Commissioner Corey could join me up here. So we are the expo donation of $761.25 to the Solid Waste Advisory Community Recycling Fund. And our last donation is to an organization that's really important to Meridian and Public Works Expo donates to this each year is the Meridian Food Bank. So if Dan Clark can join me up here, we are donating $2,537.49 to the Meridian Food Bank. So that's our presentation, quick, fun thing, and we appreciate your guys' continued support of Public Works and Public Works Week.
Thank you, Lorelei. And I know I speak on behalf of everybody, thank you to your team in putting that on and bringing it back to the community, as well as being able to reinvest in some of our partnership needs here in the community. And that's just been part of what Public Works does. So thank you. And council, any more sudden questions or comments you'd like to make?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pearl.
As the Public Works Liaison, it's been fantastic to see how this department does what they do and to get to know Lorelei. And being elected right before COVID happened, I haven't had the opportunity to go to so many of these events because they haven't existed for the last two years. So I did get a chance to go to the expo. It was much more awesome than I thought it was going to be. And I just want to say, when I saw this on the agenda, I was really excited that Public Works was able to share this with the other commissions and important members of our community. So thank you for doing that.
Councilman Cavanagh.
To the Councilwoman Pearl, when these events go away, you kind of realize we take them for granted. And there's one thing I quickly learned after returning to the expo, what a well-service that provides to our community, to our kids. My six-year-old was like on fire for Public Works and was talking to his grandparents and his friends about what happens when you flush the water and clean water and all that. So you've got a great brand ambassador, but I just also think it's such in line with the Meridian way to do a great event for our community and then also continue to pay it forward by providing donations to three worthy causes. Appreciate you and your team's significant amount of work that you put into this and appreciate the impact you're making.
Thank you. Moving on, item 17 is the Idaho Transportation Department, District 3, Eagle Road Corridor Update. Looks like we won't do an introduction from staff, so it looks like Dan is gonna come forward and introduce himself. Dan, first of all, thank you to you and the team, for Caleb and everyone else for being here. We really appreciate it. We know this has been talked about, say, the city in the media, and we appreciate you being here for the dialogue today. So with that, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. I'm Dan McLeany. I'm the Chief Operations Officer for Idaho Transportation Department, and we're very glad to be here. We've had a long-time partnership with City of Meridian and the City of Eagle, of course, on Highway 55 Eagle Road. And we really do appreciate all the teamwork to date. And we're here to help kick off a corridor traffic safety review. And so with our partners from ISP and, of course, our partners ahead, ACHD for our traffic signals, City of Meridian, City of Eagle, ITD and our Office of Highway Safety, we'll be working over the next few months on a corridor traffic safety review. So we're going to talk a little bit about that. And I do appreciate the chief and the police department overall for their teamwork with Office of Highway Safety. They recently received a grant for $43,000. It's a long-term grant. It's the one-year period since October. And the stats rolling in chief are really good. This is not just on 55, but here in the city, over 260 different citations, 200 speeding citations using the Office of Highway Safety awarded grant to Meridian PD, eight DUI arrests and 135 other violations since October. And the data is still rolling in, and we want to say thank you to the chief and his team for that partnership. Today, we're going to present some near-term and some long-term ideas that our safety review working group will look at and as well keep the council updated on. And the potential for additional grants is there too. So it's great to do a safety review and give us an opportunity through the office side of the safety. With me today, of course, is District 3 District Engineer Caleb Lakey, ISP Lieutenant Jussel, who will also present, Sergeant Mandenfield of ISP, and John Tomlinson are recently promoted, but still leadership on Office of Highway Safety to help with the presentation and questions. Our presentation gives us an opportunity to first celebrate that inter-agency teamwork and partnership, and we're going to rely on that teamwork, which also includes Compass and ITD staff here in District 3 on the planning and long-term regional route of State Highway 55. We're going to present traffic conditions currently, AM, PM, and weekend traffic data that we have to date, and talk about the updates that we've done for traffic safety on the six-and-a-half-mile corridor. We'll go into the crash data in briefly, but Office of Highway Safety provides us recent crash data. And then we'll summarize near-term possible solutions and long-term proposals as well. So it'll take us about 20 minutes or so, and then we'll open it up for questions. Thank you. Introducing our District Engineer Caleb Lakey.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Pleasure being here today again. My name is Caleb Lakey. I'm the District 3 Engineer for ITD. IT as a state agency is divided into six administrative regions. District 3 is the southwest corner of the state or the 10 counties here in the southwest corner of the state. So Meridian is one of several communities in that region, as well as State Highway 55, one of several US highway, state highways, interstate that we manage properly. So I would like to provide a little bit of a background to State Highway 55 Eagle Road. I think it provides an important context to our discussion today and leads into what Chief Operations Officer McLeany talked about, or the things we might consider as we look at Eagle Road and we look at how Eagle Road is operating. It really, I would invite you to keep in mind that a highway operates as a system. It's part of a greater whole. And so as we make changes in one location, they're going to have secondary and tertiary effects in other parts of the system. And so it's always a given and take. There's always a balancing effort that's made as we consider making changes, whether that be to lane configuration, striping, median barriers, et cetera. There's trade-off to all those things. Here on the screen, just to start off with, I want to provide you with some context to the volume of traffic that we carry on Eagle Road. 57,500 vehicles as an average daily traffic. That's a high volume. So by comparison, if you look at it, Broadway, 24,500, Fairview, 28, Chindon, 25,5, State Highway 44, 32,5, you can see the context and the artery really that 55 Eagle Road plays. You don't need the numbers to know that. You know that just by driving the road, you can see the volume that it plays, that it carries. But it really serves as a prime north-south connector in the valley. It was designed that way, and many of the features of the highway are for that purpose of moving traffic north and south. So again, a little bit of a look back at how we got to where we are today. In 1990, State Highway 55 was added, or a portion was added from Fairview to ID4, to really kind of completed 55 as we know it today. Prior to that, US 30 went down Fairview, and so that transaction happened in the early 90s. But 55 has been around longer than that, obviously. Way back in 1930, we built two bridges across the Boise River for a total cost of $54,000. I wish we could build bridges for $54,000 today. But just to give you a constant context, the highway's been around for a long time, and it has morphed and changed and adapted and readapted and readapted as things have developed and redeveloped along its corridors. I grew up here. I distinctly remember driving between my home in West Boise and Meridian for events and seeing friends. And I can picture the corner of U-Stick and Eagle Road, and it was a two-way stop condition. There was a stop sign with a red flashing light on top and four cornfields. And you stopped, made double sure you cleared because it was a highway, and over the top you'd go. And after I left for college and came back home, I sometimes would get lost. I was looking for the cornfields and the flashing light, and I couldn't find one for years. And just the development continues to happen and change the landscape of Eagle Road, and traffic continues to increase as we see growth in the area. I found it instructive as I look back at the aerial imagery. Google Earth is so cool in this regard that you can go back in time. And so this is a 2022 shot, aerial shot of State Highway 55 Eagle Road from Eagle on the right-hand side of your screen to ID4 on the left. We've put a red dot on the village. And, you know, just as kind of an epicenter, right, as everybody knows that landmark. You can see the development, obviously, the residential areas, as well as the commercial districts. You know, the highway, six-and-a-half-mile corridor, we've got two to three lanes. We're almost done with the third lane all the way from the village southbound, carrying over 50,000 cars a day, with a peak hour of over 4,000 cars. I mean, really, we kind of have these three segments. You kind of have what I, the hospital region, which is that first half mile or so at the far southern end from the freeway. Then you end and you come into what I would call the business region. It's more, more commercial district that stretches from Franklin, say, through about Chindon roughly. And then once you pass Chindon, it really drops off, maybe Macmillan, it kind of drops into more residential, right? And you can see those transitions happen along the highway. And we actually have three speed zones. There's a short 50 mile an hour speed zone on the far southern end. Majority of the highway is signed at 55 miles an hour. And there's a short 45 mile an hour zone at the far north end as we transition into Eagle and the correspond or the conjunction there with 44 and the divergence of traffic that takes place there at that, as that major intersection. So as we step back, let's step back 10 years. I, again, kept that red dot on the screen just for illustrative purposes. 10 years actually makes quite a bit of difference. 2012, you can see a large part of the commercial district is not as dense, still quite a bit of commercial, or excuse me, residential. But there's been a pretty good change. Go back another 10 years, 2002, significant change. I mean, the growth is really, it's breathtaking in many regards. And it's, you can see in this case, going back 20 years, not only the commercial, but also a lot of the residential's peeled back. If you go back even further, 92, you start getting out of the range. The Google Earth's really good. But you can see 92, 10 more years, it's, there's nothing out there. This is, this is much more like the highway I described growing up here. It was cornfields and stop control at all the major crossroads. So it's changed a lot, and my purpose in pointing that out to you as council members and as the mayor is that the highway has been here and it has been developed upon and built around and used as it should be. And the highway has adapted and changed to meet that, and it will continue to do that. But that does create some scenarios where we have to come together and think about what that looks like going forward. As we talk about what we have done in the past to be responsive to change, there are 15 signals on that highway. If the highway was strictly built and maintained to moon traffic, we wouldn't have any signals, right? It would be a shut corridor, exclusive access. There was a time when it was planned to be that way. It's not developed that way. And so we have 15 signals. Those signals are not all at major crossroads. Majority obviously are at mile crossroads, and you have half miles and even have some quarter-mile signals. Those signals serve several functions, primarily, obviously, is access, protected turning movements. They also meter traffic, though. It's very difficult to get from one end to the other without hitting a red light, if not several red lights. And so as we think about the operations of the highway, we consider speeds, et cetera. Those signals help us in that regard because they're breaking up and platooning to some degree how traffic flows and functions on the highway. Signals come with a trade-off as well. I'll show you a little bit later. The majority of our accidents happen at signals, right, intersections? Because that's where you have traffic making diverging movements and conflicting points. As I mentioned, we do have these 15 signals. They're managed by ACHD through a cooperative agreement. They have the Traffic Management Center, so they have operational control. We still own them, but they do have operational control and they incorporate them in their larger signal management center, which is a major benefit. If there is an incident or a change to be made, they can adjust timing, et cetera. We've driven this corridor. I mean, I've driven it many times. It's not my daily commute per se, but I've commuted on it. I've driven on it for recreation, et cetera. You know, 13 and a half to 16 and a half minutes is a good average if you're not hitting it during a peak congestion period. So it usually flows pretty good. It can get congested. It carries a lot of traffic. And if something happens, certainly that will change it as well. But we did some of those field checks back in August. I also wanted to mention to you that we've, you know, we've adjusted, and I'm going to talk a bit more in the next slide here about medians, but we have changed access at locations. So for example, at the village, southbound, there was a left end that was restricted years ago there. That was done in coordination with the city, with the police department. Of course, there's a lot of interest in reopening that. And the developer of the village has come to us with a plan of how they could do that and coordinate that a signal there for a protected left end with the Fairview signal, such that you wouldn't hit, if you can imagine, heading northbound on Eagle Road. If you hit a red light at Fairview, you would never hit a red light at the next one, right? So it would be coordinated. So if you're stopped already at Fairview, it would stop a little bit of traffic there at the intersection and let them cross because that's essentially three to four lanes there, and that's why we closed it. But otherwise, it's not going to add delay to northbound traffic. So that's an innovative way that we can adjust. We certainly can't put signals everywhere for every access point along 55, but that's an example of one where we've made an adjustment and we think will work pretty well. Again, to coordinate mobility and safety at the same time. Something else we've done to be responsive to the changes is we have coordinated with ACHD for an automated signal performance measure system. What that means is there's some observation technology that goes with the signal that can see how the signal's operating, and it can make recommendations. It doesn't automatically change. It's not artificial intelligence type thing, but it can make recommendations to the operators of, hey, we're, you know, peak hour, there's more vehicles at the signal than what are getting through. We could be changing a bit of green time here and modify that there. And so we've invested in that with ACHD that is in operation and is trying to collect data. And as it starts to create kind of a baseline, it'll start producing some recommendations, how we can optimize, I guess is the best word, the flow of traffic. Because as you all well know, there's a peak hour, there's a pulse. There's other times when the highway, excuse me, is wide open and doesn't function the same. There's times when ACHD will give what we call equal preference to all four legs of the intersection. Other times when they give priority to Eagle Road, right? We've got traffic gaining in the morning or the afternoon. It's going to give priority to the prime north-south mover. And then we've also added turn lanes. You've seen these. I mean, there's been turn lanes, turn pockets added over time, adjustments made for dual lefts, additional right turn lanes. There's been small modifications over and over again to adjust for what the traffic is warranting or needing to have to operate safely. Something else we did, and this one, I wouldn't say it was really super popular when we did it, but the access control medians back in 2013, 2015. Prior to that, Eagle Road looked a lot like Meridian Road South on 69 Look. So it was a five-lane cross-section with an open median. And what that created was a scenario where you could enter that middle lane at any point for making turning movements. And so that was a safety concern, and so these medians, the raised medians were installed. And we've actually seen a lot of great benefit from that, especially on the safety side. It does create, in some instances, what we call out-of-direction travel, where you have to go past maybe the place you want to go and U-turn and come back. That was a newer movement when you first did it. I think traffic has become pretty accustomed to that now. You're seeing it in more places. It actually functions pretty well. The biggest thing these medians do is they eliminate the left-out movement, which is the most dangerous. When traffic is coming out and having a driver, as you can think about this, clearing two to three lanes to your left and trying to coordinate that with two to three lanes from your right. There's way too many variables there for the human mind to correlate that super effectively, and we see poor decisions made. And so when you eliminate the left-outs, you can improve the safety there. But again, as I mentioned before, there is a balance, and I keep going back to this, between access to businesses, safety, and the operation of the highway in this instance. But we've gotten positive feedback, and those who knew 55 Eagle Road prior to the medians and those who know it now can tell the difference. Those who maybe weren't around when the highway operated previously don't quite see the change, but there definitely was a change when we installed those. So we recently did some speed checks on the highway. Now, these speed checks were staffed from my office using radar to collect speed on vehicles. And those vehicles are representative of what we consider unimpeded flow. So, you know, if there's a platoon of cars coming, we try and capture the first vehicles, the ones that aren't following the vehicle in front of them. And, you know, we're not law enforcement, so we don't influence the way cars behave around us. It's just simply data collection. And so what you have here on your screen is several collection locations we took just here recently this month in preparation for this meeting. What I want to highlight to you, as you look at these speeds, both northbound and southbound, you know, northbound 56 mile an hour, 53, 57, 59 along the corridor. Southbound 46, it's a little slower than that construction zone. And these are 85th percentile speeds. Average speed would have been a little lower than this. 57, 58, 57. So as you're looking at a posted speed currently of 55 miles an hour, these speeds are where we kind of would expect to see them. And law enforcement can certainly speak more to that. I know anecdotally, drivers say, oh, well, if you're, you know, only 10 over, law enforcement's not going to do anything. You know, that's debatable, but what we expect to see and what we're seeing, I think those marry up in this case. So we did those. That was a 7:00 to 9:30 PM across the top there. You would say that's after the PM peak and more of a free-flow condition. We also went back out 7:00 to 8:00 AM in a morning commute, and we saw very similar, 54 northbound, 58 southbound. Now, again, keep in mind, this isn't, this isn't your ends of the spectrum. This is your 85th percentile. The rationale behind that is that if you use 85th percentile, those data points captured, that represents a reasonable and rational driver in the 85% of all the data collected. So I, you know, as we talk about speed, we talk about traffic and highway management. There's education. There's obviously the engineering behind the highway, and there's enforcement, the three Es of that. And our partners at ISP are a big part of that. Captain Sly, the district commander, and his team have been great partners with us and very responsive to needs we have, focuses we have, concerns we have, and vice versa. We try and be very responsive to them in any aspects they have, especially during winter maintenance and focus areas they're seeing in their patrols. But I might ask Lieutenant Jussel if he'd like to add anything here about enforcement or anything else on there you'd like to add, Lieutenant? Okay. I will point out that in coordination with Lieutenant Jussel, we are planning a focused patrol on State Highway 55 Eagle Road specifically in September, first part of September. So that is upcoming. And when the state police do those for us, just like the statistics that Chief Operations Officer McLeany shared earlier, we will get a report from them of, you know, here's how many contacts we had, here's speeding violations, if there's any sort of other citations given, falling too close, failure to yield, et cetera. And we can certainly share those with you. So as a review of the crash data, this information was pulled from the Office of Highway Safety. And what I did here was pull the last five years of information, so 2017 through 2021. The first thing I'd like to point your attention to is the picture there at the top, the heat map, if you will, is relatively uniform. What that points to us is there's not a certain hotspot along Eagle Road or one specific intersection that's saying, this is a problem. We're seeing a uniform distribution. Crashes are We're seeing a uniform distribution. Crashes are independent or random actions. You can't predict where a crash is gonna be. When you start having crashes at a certain place, you can start seeing correlations. So that's the first thing. You will see, there's been two thousand total crashes over the last five years with four fatalities. Every fatality is certainly a tragedy, and our goal is to eliminate all fatalities. And and that is a a challenging goal. We do everything we can at the Highway Department to design, maintain and operate highways in a manner that's safe. There are independent operators in every one of our vehicles on the highway that make independent decisions about how they're gonna operate their vehicle. And those decisions sometimes result in tragic consequences. So we're gonna see these. There's over two hundred fatalities statewide every year. And of course, we're always targeting how to reduce that even further. The the biggest causes of crashes on this map, I would like to highlight to you again, as I mentioned earlier, are intersection related. In case we're seeing these where people are making turning movements. If traffic was just moving straight north-south, we would cut a large part of these out. We also see distracted driving. Unfortunately, that's not a surprise as well. Falling too close, failure to yield are further down the list, but still a contributor to failure to yield, for example, still a seven percent contributor to the overall numbers. I mentioned there's been four fatalities. There was the fatality in twenty twenty-one at Bald Cypress. In twenty twenty, there was a driver that changed lanes. He had a motorcycle. Drug and alcohol were involved. In twenty eighteen, there was a vehicle turning right that struck a pedestrian, no alcohol involved. And in twenty seventeen, there was a pedestrian struck and there was alcohol involved. So I don't know that I see a commonality in those four fatalities. Again, everyone is tragic and and we mourn the loss of of any one of those individuals. But as we look at how we manage the highway and what we might do differently, that information doesn't necessarily point us to one specific thing to look at. From a temporal distribution, year over year, again, a pretty consistent distribution. We're not seeing that. We're not seizing the seasonality to it. And as I previously mentioned, we're seeing those intersections be a large contributor. So how does fifty-five Eagle Road compare to other roads as far as crash data goes? Keep in mind, Eagle Road is is designed as a highway. It has what we call rural drainage for the majority of it. That means we've got large shoulders and swales to capture the drainage on the side of roadways compared to a urban drainage where you'd have curb and gutter and things we pulled in a lot closer. What we've found over years and years of traffic engineering is that what the driver perceives influences their speed much more than a sign does. And we're actually seeing this work pretty well in our construction zone south of south of town here. Where we have barrels and large equipment close to the lanes, people react differently than when there's nothing right by the lanes. Matter of fact, I instruct my operations crews when they're going out to set up temporary traffic control to create a a visual feature for the driver that gives them a visual cue beyond just putting up a sign. Where we have barrels that that give you a visual perception that you're you're losing some lane width, that there's things along the roadway that give you a sign, there's that that cues you to shy away a little bit, to create a safer work zone. That's what a driver will respond to. And so as a driver drives an urban street, they see sidewalks, they see pedestrians, they see storefronts much closer than they would on a more rural street. We look at at Broadway, I mentioned this earlier, you know, smaller ADT twenty-four thousand curb and gutter, Fairview twenty-eight thousand curb gutter sidewalk. So the highest crash rate, when we talk crash rates, this is the number of crashes per hundred million vehicle miles traveled. Okay, so you add up all the vehicle miles traveled on the highway and how many crashes are occurring. The worst segment on Eagle Road is an eighty point three, which puts it about number two sixty-two on our list of of crash locations in the state. The crash rate from, and that was from westbound ID four to about St. Luke, so that first piece up there, the first congested area. The crash rate overall, ID four down to State Highway forty-four is a forty point nine the last four years. So to give some context, we actually had to go outside the state. Eagle Road is unique in the state. I don't have, in 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 my peer groups across the state, North Idaho, East Idaho, they don't have an Eagle Road. They don't have a a two to three, or we think of that as a four or six lane highway with this volume. Matter of fact, there's some some larger roads that carry the same volume as Eagle Road and other parts of the state. So we we looked at Seattle, a member of our staff has has worked in that area and knew a comparable road in Seattle that was same size, just just to give you some comparison. And it was a sixty-five point eight over the last five years and seventy-four point two in twenty twenty. So if you're just looking at the numbers, again, Eagle Road, tip to tail, forty point nine, we're below what we're seeing in a comparable road. It's hard to create an exact comparison, but to give you some sort of context. And then as we look in the state of Idaho, number two sixty-two on the list. Again, those traffic counts I showed you earlier. But I added to this bullet here, a bullet for State Highway sixteen. We had a great groundbreaking ceremony for State Highway sixteen yesterday. That's gonna be a reality to connect Chindon all the way to the freeway. Why is that important here? Well, that's gonna create another option for drivers that's going to be a north-south connector, mobility connector. That highway is designed and will be built as a controlled access facility. There will only be access at the major crossroads. And eventually it will be designed with interchange type crossroads there. Excuse me. So that will give drivers another option. It's not going to take all the traffic off Eagle Road. There there's there's way too much of a draw to Eagle Road. There's way too much of a great community here in Meridian to say Eagle Road's gonna start seeing a dramatic drop in in vehicles. However, it, you know, there's gonna be options for drivers. And I suspect that we're gonna see some drivers actually travel over to sixteen to head north or south versus come down Eagle Road if they're looking to go tip to tail. If they're gonna be frequenting stores or businesses or residential areas, of course, they'll be using fifty-five. So as we talk access, this really is is teamwork with the city and business and development. It's it's case by case, right? Every time the development application comes in and we talk about direct access to the highway, what does that look like? Of course, we have the IDAPA policy that that guides that. You know, access from a local road is preferred, if possible, as for safety and mobility reasons. You know, that starts talking about the the options for baggage roads, frontage roads, cross access type scenarios. IDAPA spells out minimum distance between access points, and it spells out that parcels cannot be denied. We can't land lock a parcel access. So those are some of our guideboards. And of course, changing or restricting access has consequences, I said earlier. So if we restrict, for example, left ins, left outs, whatever it may be, we're going to essentially force vehicles to choose a different route. And most likely, that case is gonna be a U-turn at a different intersection. U-turns are effective, but U-turns have their own conflict points. They usually are a a lower conflict, lower speed. But they do come with their own set of considerations. And so that's that's something to keep in mind. As we zero in on unsignalized left turns, which is of interest for the conversation, between Franklin and Chindon, there are six channelized mid-block accesses. So those access points at Lanark, Presidential Florence, Bald Cypress, West Metal Dale and Sedona are those channelized access points where you can make a left-hand turn into an a road, but you can't turn left back out of the roadway. As we looked at those and examined the crash data there, there's been four to seven crashes at each. The types vary some, but the commonality is a failure to yield as a contributing factor. And most have resulted in property damage and some with with injury. So again, there's some commonalities. We look at specifically those turning movements along the highway. And we also have two U-turns in that same area that are strictly U-turns. There's no access point, just a U-turn. So I my intent has been to paint a little bit of a picture again of the history of Eagle Road, how we got to where we are today. Highlight some of the considerations in access and speeds and in reviewing crash day that we might consider as you look at how fifty-five Eagle Road operates today and into the future. Again, ITD has been and will continue to be a partner with the city and with our other transportation agencies to effectively manage the state highway. And we realize that those things will continue to change. In summary, the the speed checks completed this summer don't suggest a speed change is warranted. Our crash statistics to date are not unreasonable compared to similar roadways in Idaho or in the area. And access, land use planning and forethought is crucial, right? We we will continue to respond to access requests, but access from local businesses using frontage or baggage roads is best. And so we looked, we looked a partner on those things. As Chief Alpha Officer McLean mentioned, we are proposing a corridor operational study to review the corridor in coordination with state police, a kind of highway district, city meridians team, to say, okay, you know, we're adding a third lane, southbound. That's changing things. I mentioned the upcoming signal there at Meridian Road, or excuse me, at the Meridian Village. Take a look at this. Are there other things we can do? Are there other other things, other trade offs we want to entertain as we look forward to what Eagle Road's gonna be moving moving forward into the next generation? We'd like to update you as a council next spring with that. Things to be considered, of course, speeds. How we might enhance visual messaging, if that's digital boards, striping, signage, additional signage, or additional access control. What are some of the things you've recently done and completed? So we have done a signage review and made some updates specifically at Bald Cypress and the other channelized left turns. That bottom left picture there is, we added a placard underneath left turn yield to through. That's additional reminder to the driver as they're seeing that sign is directly in front of them. We also identified that as you sit in those left turn lanes, the way that they're currently designed is you are directly opposing traffic coming towards you. So you've got a left turner opposing you directly. And as you sit there, it's hard to see around them because you're straight on with them. Additionally, at night, their lights are basically straight in your eyes. And so we are going to going to be repaving Eagle Road starting this fall and into next year. And as part of that repaving effort, we're going to restripe those left turn lanes. What we're gonna all gonna do is simply shift the line over a foot or two so that you're offset just slightly enough. So as a driver, you're not staring into the car across from you, you're looking down the side of the car. It's a small improvement. We think it'll make it'll make a difference. I mentioned the third way, the third lane widening in coordination with Meridian Village there. That's looking good and nearing completion. Corridor paving, we're gonna mill out and repave the whole corridor. We appreciate your patience and partnership with us is that we've worked with that road and crews have worked tirelessly. I promise you to to maintain the roadway. We've had a few areas give us a little bit more of a headache than others. We're still committed to that, but that whole road's getting repaved. Just for a second, think about how much pavement that is. You know, six and a half miles by four or six lanes is is a lot. So that contract is is let and is starting. We're gonna start in the south end and focus by the hospital, grab the westbound on-ramp and then push north as much as we can before the weather turns, and we'll be back in the spring, summer to to finish that up. And then a refresh of the stripes, of course. A a small thing, we're doing a little U-turn, we call them loons, project at Eustick and McMillan. It was brought to our attention that if you, we've signed those for U-turns at Eustick, for example. So if you're northbound and you want a U-turn at Eustick, that's a legal movement. The problem is you only have two receiving lanes to turn into. So if your vehicle's much larger than a traditional sedan, you might have problems and you probably will. And so you can go out there and you can see some evidence of that. So we're simply gonna address that. We're gonna create a loon, just a little bit of a bulb out, if you will, of asphalt to accommodate that turning radius. We're looking to accomplish that with our own operational crews yet this fall. And then when the paving comes back through, they'll kind of clean that up and make it a little bit more permanent. So a little bit of a minor enhancement there. And then I already mentioned with the state police enhanced enforcement this September, a focus solely on State Highway fifty-five to give an emphasis there. So what are my recommendations to you as a mayor and council? My recommendation is that as a city, you dedicate staff time to participating in that operational corridor study. I would recommend to you that you invite us back in the spring to report out on those findings. And finally, I'd recommend to you that the the city consider co-hosting an open house to communicate that with our other partners and stakeholders. Mayor, members of the council, with that, I'll conclude my remarks and certainly stand for any questions you may have from me or other members of my team.
Thank you, Caleb. Council questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Pearl?
I have three questions, if I may. Would you like me to share them all now or just go in order?
Could you go one at a time, please?
Okay. The first is, you mentioned the Automated Signal Performance Measure System that was installed earlier this year. Was that installed at every light along Eagle Road or just at a couple of the intersections?
Mr. Mayor? Councilwoman, yes, it's it's for the whole corridor. So it'll it'll reflect data on how the whole corridor operates.
Thank you. Secondly, you mentioned what that we're not at a place where we warrant a speed change. What would be the metrics that would then cause that consideration to happen? You you said there's crash, you know, crash numbers. Is there a standard at which point then the state would look at changing the speeds? That's a national standard or is that something the ITD decides on their own or how does that work?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman, the the majority, the the largest metric is, as I mentioned, to the eighty-fifth percentile. So it would be speeds collected on the corridor. What speed the traffic is traveling, the eighty-fifth percentile representing what we consider a reasonable and rational rational driver is operating. And so you could do a corridor speed study to see what the corridor, how the corridor is functioning and what those speeds are showing you. And then from there, consider modifying speed. Now, as part of that modification, you have that speed study and the and the collected data as a as a backbone, if you will. And then, of course, as engineering judgment comes into play of, well, what other factors are to consider? I mentioned to you, if you were in a highly urbanized area with a curb and gutter and sidewalk and, you know, maybe a school and and other things happening right there on the highway, how does that influence? How does that play with the drivers and the visual cues they're receiving versus a highway, you know, this takes the high sixteen headed out towards Emmett, right? I mean, you're in the open area. No one perceives any reason to not drive a slower speed, and they're gonna drive what they feel comfortable with, for the most part, right? There's there's always outliers in that regard.
Okay, thank you. And I've noticed that a lot of the the slowdown on Eagle, especially between the interstate and Fairview, are construction trucks. And not just because of the the roadwork that's being done, but just because there's a lot of construction going on in that area in general. How does ITD handle those or do they handle them differently than other types of traffic? Is there a way to require them to stay in a particular lane? Or, I mean, I realize you can't change the, don't need to change the speed limit for them because they're slower. But they they cause a lot of the congestion. So are you having conversations with, you know, developers, construction teams about taking alternative routes? I just, it's it's really bad in that section, such that I think it's at a point of danger. But you would have better statistics than I would.
Mayor, Councilwoman, we certainly take into consideration. I I can't speak specifically to the complete thought process on the current construction. But I might share with you that there was a large discussion about this upcoming paving project. Again, you know, six lanes by six and a half miles, that's a large impact. We have a general operating policy in D three that we don't work on Eagle Road during the day. It's nighttime work. And so as we looked at the upcoming paving project, how do we, how do we not limit the contractors that are being ineffective with what they're doing? You know, talking about a large mill and paving operations, a lot of equipment, a lot of obstructions. And so we coordinated with ACHD to do full closures at nighttime. So what you will see as a driver and as a citizen here is one day you'll drive the road, next day you're gonna come out and there's gonna be new black asphalt down. You're not going to see construction work happening, the paving work happening during the day to address exactly the issue you're talking about. Now, the the southbound lane isn't quite the same type of project. There's different type of work happening in there that maybe parts or parcels of it could happen at night or not happening at night, different type of project. This large scale project, though, I just want to emphasize, that consideration is on on our mind. It's something we try and consider as best we can to say, how can we coordinate this to reduce impacts, reduce concerns for the drivers and still produce a product that's that's quality and desired way we want it?
Mr. Mayor, a follow-up, please?
That's one, Pearl.
Thank you. I probably didn't ask my question clearly. I didn't mean the construction trucks for the roadway project. I meant just trucks in general, from grocery trucks to semis to other construction projects like hotels that are going in along that corridor, cement trucks, gravel trucks, all coming off of the interstate. That's that's where I was going with that, like a long-term problem, not just the construction piece.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, I apologize. I obviously focused on the other. We we don't have the ability to dictate who drives on the state highways. But the State Highway sixteen coming into play, I'll point you back there, is going to provide an alternative for a larger vehicle that says, I want to get across the valley. It might cost me a couple of miles to the west, but I know once I get on it, I'm not gonna have stop and go traffic. I'm not gonna have the grade coming off the railroad tracks. I'm not gonna have railroad tracks and go across them. I mean, so that's the best answer I have as far as how we're addressing that. There's so much happening on Eagle Road, all the way from, you know, childcare facilities, all the way up to heavy construction happening, all in the same area, as you get this conglomerate of activities. It's it's not homogeneous, who's the user type. And everyone is is currently using the same infrastructure. Whether or not they want to go from the freeway to Eagle, or they just want to go a quarter mile down to get a cheeseburger, we're all in the same infrastructure. And so part of that is providing other large infrastructure for relief. But I also will point out that we have a great grid and relief system already planned out. I mean, the local road system here is actually great on the one mile But I also will point out that we have a great grid and relief system already planned out. I mean, the local road system here is actually great on the one mile square. When you have neighboring roads like Cloverdale, Locust Grove, and you got every mile, McMillan, Eustick, you've got, you have options to get there. Everybody likes Eagle Road though, because they, they know they can start moving the direction they want to go the quickest.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Schrader.
Got a couple of questions. So you say that you don't see an issue, a commonality between the four fatalities. But isn't it true that vehicles that are moving faster are inherently more dangerous?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman, vehicle speed certainly can be a contributing factor, right? And as, as vehicle speeds increase, that changes the result of a crash. But there are many factors involved in the crash. And so to solely point to one and say, if that changed, the crash would change. I, I don't think we can do that.
Yeah. So I, where, where I kind of have an issue is your analysis is this road is meant for people to go fast and people are going fast. The 85th percentile is going the speed limit. But the, the problem is the context of the speed of the road and what surrounds it has changed. So if you go to your slide, back when this road was constructed, there wasn't a gigantic city surrounding this road and now there is. So we do have neighborhoods. We do have schools. We do have huge shopping districts. So I'm struggling with, I think what I'm hearing from you is people are going the speed limit it's meant to be. We don't see a problem. But I, my feedback to you is I've heard our community does see a problem because we now have a huge city with a huge highway going through it at speeds that are dangerous. Do you have any feedback? Because that's my feedback for you.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, I don't know that I have feedback. I would offer a couple of thoughts and maybe Chief Operations Officer Macklin, he'd like to say a few words, but again, the development has, has joined the highway. The highway has been there. And so we've made cautious decisions over time to develop, grow, live, recreate, whatever it is along this highway. And for good reason, because the highway gives us the connectivity that we like to have. And so that comes with a trade off of what the highway function is with what the context of the land use is. So there's going to, there's going to be a trade off there. We don't have a, you know, if, if we were to, let's just say, adjust the highway because we want to adjust to what the current land use is, at what point does that, does that dynamic shift back? I mean, there's lots of users on the highway from the opposite perspective, if I may try and represent, there's other users of the highway that are saying, I don't recreate here. I'm not shopping here. This is, this is a mobility corridor for me. So we've got multiple users that we're trying to balance and find the blend of what is the most appropriate response for all of them, not exclusively one side or the other.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Schrader.
Yeah. And not to get emotional, but that's where I have a big issue because I feel like families of Meridian are sacrificing their kids so that people from Eagle can have a fast commute into Boise. And I don't think four fatalities is an acceptable level of fatalities for, I don't think there is an acceptable level, but certainly that is not acceptable. How many crashes are there in the state of Idaho every year?
Mayor, Councilwoman, I could find out for you the number of total crashes. I don't know if anybody. Thank you. Thank you, John. Twenty eight thousand.
And so where, where I'm struggling a little bit, the major roads that you gave as comps that are not outside of the state have half of the traffic running through them on a daily basis. And just looking at the statistics and how the road is being used, like the road is not being used as a highway. It's a hybrid. It's like an arterial that's being used to access business districts and it's trying to be a highway at the same time. And so I just feel like there's a big disconnect between what you guys are seeing and, and what maybe some of us are seeing, maybe not all of us, but maybe some of us. So I guess a question for you would be, you know, there are other cities in Idaho that have highways running through them that have made land use decisions where their cities have built up around the highway, but the highway slows down when it goes through their city. Right? McCall, I can think of tons of examples. So what does it take to show you that the speed limit should be lower as it goes through a city?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Schrader. This is Dan Macklin again, Chief Operations Officer for ITD across the state. These are great questions. We're going to present that traffic safety working groups that I mentioned in the opening to take a look at the corridor overall. And we're open to feedback on the speed limits. And again, remember there's, there are three zones on this corridor, 50, 45 and 55 miles per hour. Depending on if it's, you know, hospital zone, major intersections or residential. So this is a great time. That's why we're here today. This is part of our kickoff for that. So we, we really do appreciate the question. It's very important to us as your engineers for IT, for the state in supporting the highways, that we take every accident seriously. And we get very, very concerned when there's serious accidents, of course. So we have some ideas that we've already presented on the interim. The lieutenant could also fill in on some of the enhanced enforcement. The signing alone isn't always the solution. We have over 50,000 average daily traffic a day. That traffic is until we build other, you know, supportive routes like 16 is, is not going to slow down for us overall in the volume numbers. But if we can do more on the enforcement end, we can make this a smarter corridor. So drivers have a sense of congestion ahead, or maybe we'll talk about variable speeds during certain times of the peak hours or off peak hours. That's, that's going to be great for our working group to really be challenged with because we know the importance of it for the city as well as for the region. So I just wanted to propose that. And some of the things I'll look at would be feeds, uh, uh, speed feedback signs. Possibly closing some of those mid-block left turns and, and leading everybody to a U-turn at those four major mid-block turns. And that's a discussion with the council as well as local businesses. And those are areas of serious concern for accidents as well. And I just want to be sure we, we let you know, we're open to all ideas.
If I could just pile up on a couple, because we, we've talked about the, some of these options over time, and I appreciate the fact that we're going to work together to look at them. First, I, you know, our staff will be committed to participate in whatever it is that we're doing from police. So transportation to myself, to my office. I also encourage you include Boise. Boise does have a mile and a half of this road and I know that they are interested in what happens on this corridor as well in the conversations. The thing that I would hope that you would do, and, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, I'm in for what I've heard is speed studies are done at night on Eagle Road because that's when traffic flows. I would ask that you please take into consideration all hours of the day traffic as you look at what the, what rate that the speed can flow, because I think without that information of a variable speed is going to be considered, it can't be considered, you know, to, to know what is that rate at two to five o'clock? You know, the, the evening hour. So that would be my ask is that, you know, as you look at the speed, you just don't do it at night. If it's, if you're going to close down, only do construction at night. You know, there's a reason why you're only doing construction at night. It's because that's when, that's when the, the road's not used. And of course, people are going to drive at the posted speed limit or a little faster, you know, from that standpoint, that's, that's the nature of it. And I, and, and we get that when we understand it. So please take into consideration all hours of the day usage of this road to see what makes the most sense. And we're, at least from the, what I can do is I'm committed to having staff, myself, whoever be there full-time on this project.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council. And we do have the capabilities with, with some time to, to expand our, we did an August check, early August check focusing on AM and PM peak and weekend. But as a team, we do want to do more and, and cover the season as well because sometimes, you know, the summer is different than the fall is different than the winter. So we look forward to working with the team on that.
And Councilman Borton, it looks like you're, would you like to ask questions as well?
Yeah, well, yeah, just one question and a comment. I don't think Councilwoman Schrader's question was answered. Some objective feedback is it's, it's absolutely too fast. Her comments are spot on. It is too fast. Speed is 100% a factor in crashes. It's just an obvious truth. It's, it is absolutely too fast for the way it is designed and the way it's built out. And I would think the community that this, this highway is ripping through, its perspective on that would, would be paramount. The question that, that I heard was what's the objective metric? What's the, the benchmark past which some decision maker says now we agree it's too fast. What is it? Is there some measurable finite determination that tips? That makes the decision maker say it's flipped. It's too fast. We're changing it. If it's a matter of subjective perspective, I will give you tons of it. A subjective perspective from our community is it is too fast. And I can get 100 people for everyone that says it's not 100 people that say it is, including everybody that crashes more than one a day on this stretch. So I know you guys are the messengers. So I could not be more emphatic that it is too fast. And whoever gets killed after August 23rd will suffer at the hands of the glacial pace of government. Again, that's not maybe your, your fault in this, but between now and when decisions get made, we're going to watch slow grinding process on what's an obvious problem. So the one question I have and, and I can't be more emphatic because hopefully that's some input as to what our community is saying with the speed on Eagle Road. The one question is if it was determined, if whatever that metric was, if today was the day that it was determined Eagle Road should go to 45 miles an hour. Can you just briefly state what's the process of that? I mean, is, is the process of actually doing it, a 12-month process, once the decision's made? If you know, that would be helpful to know because our community is going to want to understand the absolute soonest they may see relief on this stretch once the decision's made. So I appreciate your input on what the answer to that is.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Borton, Dan McElhany again. You know, as for state highways, if we had speed, if speed related accidents, and I know, I know speed is a factor in all accidents, definitely, but
Thank you.
The corridor doesn't, it's a difficult quarter in that it is serving so many different needs. And that first, that first issue is that over 50,000 vehicles a day. So to jump to reducing the speed limit, which, which we have reduced speed limits in certain zones, and that's what the traffic safety review team needs to look at. And then try to balance that, how does that combine with other features for a smarter corridor or closing some of those mid-block left turns or helping the corridor be smarter? How does that serve the quarter overall? And if it, if it happened to be at 45, is that, what are the congestion issues related? And can all of us say, well, you know, maybe the balance is there. We just haven't had a chance to go into those details as a, as a partnership. So I'm not going to predict what the safety review team is. Today we brought what data that we had so that we're with Caleb and his team's help, just educated on, on the corridor and the history. And, but we're definitely looking ahead and, and we'll need that help from the cities Boise and Eagle as well.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilboard, did you have a follow up?
That's all right.
Councilman Kevner.
Mr. Mayor, and I'll, I guess I'll be the third council member that's been direct in saying, I've heard from a lot of our citizens that are really concerned about speed on Eagle Road. So recognize it is a unique thoroughfare. It does serve a lot of people. Mr. Lake, you appreciate the history. It was a nice walk down memory lane. And I know that there's no simple solution to this. But you did also present some options and I, I wanted to respond in kind to a couple of them. So first, I know we didn't talk a whole lot about what it's going to entail in the safety review, but you guys are the experts on that. It is often, I think, an approach to wait until that report is complete and in a pretty PDF with lots of great images and it's a final product and put in a bow and deliver to us. But I'd really encourage you to share that data with all of us in real time as that comes in. And this is something we're hearing from a lot on our community about and being able to see what you're seeing sooner rather than later, I think helps us communicate to our citizens about what you guys are learning. The second piece about community engagement. I, I am one that I like the speed on Eagle Road. I, I use that as a place to get from point A to point B. And so I may be a minority amongst the council, but I'm also one that have heard so much from our citizens that this is a big deal to them. So you had mentioned some listening and I think that many of us on council, that's something Meridian does really well is we are proactive in going and talking to our community about the things that are on their mind. And I think we'd offer to partner with that. And if you're hearing one thing and we're hearing one thing, it'd be great to put us in a room together so we can hear from our community. And I think the council would be supportive of that. And then the last piece that I would just suggest, not just for Meridian, but for across the state is you guys, you know, you represent a certain district. It's much more macro than the local level that we look at it as. And I think where some of the frustration comes is that we're used to, when we hear a problem from our community, we can work collaboratively and solve it pretty quickly. And I, and I would encourage you all as a state agency that I think does a great job to just go from good to great and find opportunities or mechanisms. So if a city, if a local jurisdiction identifies a problem, that we can work with you proactively to address it sooner than, rather than later. I just think that's a great way of, of good governance and of the same constituency you serve is the same constituency we serve. And as much as we can all be in that same car together, I think our citizens and our taxpayers benefit.
Mr. Mayor?
Let me, since time is short, let me see if Councilman Ho, Hoagland hasn't spoken yet.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of questions. I need some clarification on one thing. You talked about fall paving kicking off and that, that's going to be a major project because that is a well-used highway. When, when is that going to start taking place? When construction barrels start coming out and, and things like that?
Mayor, Councilman, it's imminent. I, I should have an exact date for you. I can find it out, but the contract's been let. I expect it the day starting up, starting up here. So I don't have the exact date. I can find out and follow up to you, but it will be starting very shortly.
And, and to follow up on that, Mr. Mayor, it might, one of my things that I, I, if, if you start, say, September, and then we have, there's, there's a, if ISP is going to do enhanced enforcement, I mean, if you have construction barrels and all that, as we know, and you, and you mentioned, there is impact to speeds. And so it's, it's a little interesting to not have it fully operational to do enhanced enforcement or is enhanced enforcement to for safety and construction on that. That's why I'm trying to figure out what the purpose of this enhanced enforcement is. Is it for due to the construction or is it just because to, to regulate, maintain appropriate speeds on the current, current highway?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, so the coordination I've made with Lieutenant Justin's team is specifically to address the concerns your council was noting fact that it may correspond with construction, as you say, kicking off on Eagle Road. We may seize the moment and do some additional construction enforcement additionally, but they're not going to be working the whole stretch of your road. So if we want to get out away from the construction influence, we can certainly go the other end of the corridor and work there. We can work, we can work anywhere on the corridor. So I think we'll probably just seize the moment and take advantage of both. But, you know, they're not, they're going to, if they write a citation for speed, we may, we may see some of that data, but they're not out there to collect speed data per se. It's an enforcement action.
I appreciate it, Mr. Mayor. Caleb, yeah, I was just curious as to what, if there was a particular purpose or in this case, it can be dual purpose. That's not an issue. I, I would also like to understand and you can send the information to, to me and I can disseminate it, but I'm interested in learning more about that left turn into the village that they're proposing and how that works. Just from the fact that there's, there's westbound traffic on Fairview that does head north on Eagle. And there's quite a bit. And if that's going to slow that up some more, we have a lot of people going down records now, which is on the east side of the village and west of Kleiner Park. And we, in fact, we've worked with Ada County Highway District and recently lowered that speed there just because of the complaints we were getting from residents and others and safety with, with the park and different things. So all those things have that impact. And I know you talked about encouraging, you know, other local access points and whatnot, but just to make sure that, that is, see if there's any concern there. Don't know if there will be, but just need to understand how that's going to work a little, little better. But when you get the chance on that. And, and then my last question, Mr. Mayor, was, I was trying to remember when that lower speed limit went into effect on the north end in the, in the Eagle area. Was that when they when it, the highway moved outside of Eagle and it became the bypass? Or was that when, when, when did 45 miles per hour take effect in that northern half, northern portion of, of highway?
Mayor, Councilman, I can, again, I can tell you when it happened. I don't have the date with me today. I believe you're correct. When we, when we changed the alignment of State Street and made the alternate route, that whole intersection was reconfigured. And I believe at that time it was modified. Well, it existed prior to that. I, I, I don't know. I have to look into it for you. But again, the But again, the point there is it's not slowing down because we're entering Eagle City limits. It's slowing down because we're coming to a major T-intersection essentially. Traffic can continue north, but majority is diverging east and west.
And Mr. Mayor, your point to that, and that's why it's 45 up closer to the interstate and, and towards Franklin because of that major intersection and those congestion points that really are, are serious is very similar to that. Is that correct assumption on my part?
Yes, that goes into my, Mr. Mayor, I apologize. Goes back to my comment about, you know, there's a speed data collection that's a backbone of a speed study, but then there's engineering judgment as far as what other activities are happening, turning movements, roadside features, et cetera. And that would be example of that.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Councilman Pearl.
Thank you very much. I know we're primarily discussing Highway 55 this evening, but we've had brief conversations on the dais when we've had applications along Highway 69 between the interstate and CUNA that, that we not repeat history. And so I'm hoping that you all are taking that into account and looking how not to go that direction with Eagle Road. We're very cognizant of it as we're having conversations with developers that want to bring projects into that, seeing a lot of commercial growth there on, on the, in the CUNA part of it, but really, really don't want to be having this conversation again in a decade for that stretch. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Council, any additional questions or comments?
Well, thank you for being here. We look forward to working with you to, to solve these issues. And as we say, you, you know where I am on this. We've had many frank conversations from, from that standpoint, you know, what we'll be advocating for. But I'm also fair overall safety in the corridor and I'm open to all conversations, but if it doesn't include speed, then it's not a conversation that's going to go far in my, in my area. So that will be my focus, just so you know, but we've, we've talked about that. So thank you both for being here and we'll be in touch and having more conversations soon.
Thank you, Mayor. And on behalf of our, our working group with Meridian Police and ISP and moving ahead, we really appreciate this opportunity to talk about safety on the highways. And really, this has been a fantastic safety meeting, safety awareness. Hope we get the word out about, you know, driver safety. I think the enhanced enforcement, also those opportunities with our Public Affairs Office also just gets the word out, you know, just drive safely and drive well. Thank you. Thank you, Council.
Next item on the agenda is item 18. Hopefully this can be a very, very quick item for us. If it's going to go later, we can go ahead and pause and come back if we need to, but... This is Mayor's office. Update to City Council on Housing Assistance Program funded via the, via ARPA.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It should be fairly quick. So I don't have a formal presentation for you. What I'm handing out is just an updated draft of the information that's in your packet. That's also been emailed around to you all with one minor edit change update, what I'll call under the third row down of available funding. We just added a note at the suggestion to clarify that this is one-time ARPA funding. So with that, what you've got in front of you is the proposal that you all discussed with me about ARPA funding being allocated towards housing assistance, essentially emergency rental housing, emergency housing assistance, whether it's rental housing assistance, mortgage payments, following the guidelines that are listed in the ARPA guidance for housing affordability, housing assistance programs. We've worked with our staff in both legal, finance and in the CDBG program to put together some of these points. Essentially, it follows the ARPA guidance to the T for housing assistance. And so with that, I'll stop and leave any questions to you all other than, I do want to say a big thank you to legal, finance and CDBG for sitting down with me and going through this and putting this together pretty quick.
Dave, one quick question. Do we have to have the application period be open for 30 days? Is that required under the ARPA guidance?
We don't, Mr. Mayor, Council, we don't have to. That was just based on natural flow of how things generally work, giving applicants enough time to get information put together and packaged up and sent in. Working through the software system felt like that was an appropriate time to try and time within as close as possible to the fiscal year start.
My, my, my suggestion is we reduce that because I think we know who our applicant, applicants are. And if they're, they've been following this close enough, I think they should be able to get in an application within a two-week period. That would be my suggestion to, to try to move this faster, to get it closer to the date. But that's my two cents, Council. Additional questions, comments? Councilman Kavner.
I initially kind of had the same kind of thought as let's try and move this quickly. I also think though that any applicant that's going to take this seriously is going to need a little bit of time. And September 1 is next week. So I'm, I'm not opposed to the 30-day period. I think I would rather get good, clear applications than quick applications unless there's some benefit that we get by shortening it for two weeks, I would just prefer to leave it for the 30 days.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pearl.
Thank you. Dave, there's a requirement for the eligible applicants that they report to the city on a regular basis. Can you give more thoughts on what that reporting will look like? So for example, one of the requirements is that they meet Meridian residents that they're serving. Do they, when they come in with their applications, do they need to show that they can track Meridian-specific services, like residence specific to Meridian, excuse me, services specific to Meridian residents? And what will that look like as far as the reporting goes? Some of the nonprofits in our area do track things that way and some of them don't. So can you talk a little bit more about that?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Pearl, so two pieces to that, I think I heard. So on the front end in the application, the expectation is that the applicant describes how they can go about tracking per the records and per the ARPA guidance, how they can keep track of who they're helping, who they're assisting. On the reporting side of things, it would be similar to the CDBG program where they are allocating funding to a program, whatever, whoever the agency may be and whatever their programs are, specifically who they're helping, what they're funding, whether it's rental assistance. As an example, we currently see when we get reimbursement requests through the CDBG program, they provide us the check, who it's made out to, the address of the folks, where it's being, where the funds are being sent to. I, I do think it's a fairly standard procedure in this type of program. And I also think from the city's perspective, it's good assurance and insurance to ensure that gaining and getting that information helps us ensure that they're meeting the requirements of the agreement and the ARPA guidelines, which is insurance policy.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
I was comfortable with compressing the schedule too. I think it's on everyone's radar if that's, that's an option. I agree with the mayor. I think that makes sense. And I like the fact that you really have a narrow focus in the eligible services on efforts to retain housing, whether it's rental or not. And it's trying to empower individuals who already reside in Meridian to retain their ability to continue to do so, which I think is a fantastic, a more narrow scope for this. So that's off on the team, putting it together quick.
Mr. Mayor, one more question.
Councilman Pearl.
Thank you. I don't see on here that there's any kind of minimum or probably wouldn't be minimum, but a maximum request. So I assume that we will just take the applications one by one and make a decision and kind of weigh their need and weigh their qualifications and make a determination on the amount that we, that would be awarded.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Pearl, I think you're tracking with our thought is we don't know, number one, we think we know or have some idea of which agencies, which groups may apply. We don't know who may apply. We don't know what amount they may be asking for beyond what we've heard in the past. And I think it's evaluate the applications when they come in based on what they're asking for and the merits of their application.
Move forward and let's, let's, we know who the possible applicant, applicant are. Let's see if we can reach out and see if they can do a, even a one-week, you know, timeframe reduction, you know, it's...
Duly noted. We'll work as quickly as possible and work with what we can get.
Fair enough. Thank you. Okay. I assume we want to vacate. Last item, Mr.?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, yeah, we won't have time to fully go through the executive session before the start of our next meeting. So we'll, we do have that on the agenda for our regular scheduled meeting. So we'll take that up at that time. So we'll vacate item number 19. And so I would move that we adjourn the work session.
I have a motion to adjourn. I'm in favor, so if I may say an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Let's have it. We are adjourned.[1180.58]
Council will call the meeting in order for the record. It is August 23rd, 2022 at 6:05 PM. We'll begin this evening's regular city council meeting with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilwoman Perrow.
Here.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Here.
Councilman Borton.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here.
Mayor Simison.
Here. Next time it's Pledge of Allegiance, please rise and join us in the pledge. Next, we have the community invocation, which will be delivered this evening by Darrell Zachman of Calvary Chapel Treasure Valley. If you all would please join us in the community invocation, or take this as a moment of silence and reflection.
Thank you, Mayor Simison and Council. Heavenly Father, we do just thank you for your presence tonight. We thank you for your power and grace. God, we thank you for how you have blessed our city, continue to bring people from all over to this city. Lord, we know that with that comes added challenges. And so today we do just pray, Father, for your grace and your power and wisdom and great ideas. Lord, for Mayor Simison and our city council members, that they might ensure justice and peace and equality for all in our city. Lord, we thank you that you are able to do exceedingly and abundantly above all we ask or think. We ask these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Appreciate being here this evening.
Up next is the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Just a reminder, we do have the executive session at the end of this, which is, has been published. But I move adoption of the agenda as published.
I have a motion second to adopt the agenda as published. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the agenda is agreed to. Mr. Quirk, do we have anyone sign up under public forum?
Mr. Mayor, we do not.
Okay, so we will go into our action items. First item is a public hearing, and I always get confused on these missionary. It was, we need to continue because it's a notice in air, but do I open it?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, no, since it's going to be renoticed for a new date, and I think it's already been, I think design's already gone up and everything, so there's nothing to do for this one.
Okay, so do we need to take formal action to continue it, or not continue it, or just ignore it?
I think, I think it's noted on the agenda that it's going to be continued. It will be continued due to its date certain that's already been determined prior to this meeting, so I don't think there's any other action to take.
Okay, then with that, we will go on to item two, which is public hearing for Meridian Academy Playfield, H2022-0031. And we will open this public hearing with staff comments from Mr. Hood.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I am midway of cleaning up or finishing off Allen's projects, so to bear with me this evening, but I am pitching in for him and getting these to the finish line, hopefully. So the application you have as item number two on your agenda is the rezone of 6.2 acres of roughly 13.8 acre site. It's currently zoned IL or light industrial, and the 6.2 acres is proposed to be rezoned to CG or general retail and service commercial. Property address is 2311 East Lanark Street. It is located just north of Franklin Road and south of the railroad tracks. If you're familiar with that area, there's a bench there, so part of this property is up near Franklin, and it dips down towards the railroad tracks in that area. In 1992, a CUP was approved for an alternative high school with playfields, and a district maintenance facility has substantively been constructed on the property. This property is on our future land use map designated as civic to reflect the existing school nature. But there is an industrial use, and I'll go into that a little bit more on this site as well. The applicant, which is the school district, wants to construct a new playfield on the southern side of the property. Since that the original annexation and conditional use permit, the IL zoning district has been changed to no longer allow educational institutions. We did discuss with the applicant the potential to do a conditional use permit to expand an existing non-conforming use. They have decided, though, to move forward with the subject rezone, which will create a split zone parcel, but staff is supportive of either option provided to them. So this request, is my understanding, is being rezoned primarily because a district maintenance facility is also on the property, which is not solely ancillary to the Meridian Academy. So you can kind of see that existing maintenance office in the middle of the parcel on the west side. The applicant has stated that the school district related light industrial uses such as equipment repair, fabrication, and manufacturing may occur in this facility. Again, accordingly, the applicant wants to keep that property, and then the southern half, if you will, the property where the ball fields are today, is owned in light industrial. Access to the site occurs from East Lanark Street, an industrial collector. That, that road today dead ends essentially into the site. On ACHD's master's site map, master street map, excuse me, East Lanark is shown to extend across the property east to west and eventually out to Eagle Road. There's just one more parcel between the subject property and the connection to Lanark that would then get you out to Eagle Road. Additionally, a future collector is also shown on the ACHD master street map extending along the eastern property line north to south. Approximately, and if you can see my cursor, this location, so down that grade that I was talking about before, and into the site. They're discussing with ACHD, they have responded that the north-south collector is no longer required or needed. But the applicant is required to dedicate 54 feet of right-of-way for East Lanark Street, that east-west collector that I mentioned previously, and to construct that street as a 40-wide, 40-foot wide collector with curb gutter and sidewalk with a future building permit issuance on this site. This application is, again, just the rezone, and there's no building currently planned for the site or part of the subject application. It is for the sports field, and I'll let the applicant's representative go into a little bit more of that. But because there are no vehicle, no new vehicle trips proposed, didn't trigger the requirement for Lanark to street to be constructed at this time. Staff is recommending approval of the subject rezone request. When I checked just a few minutes ago, there was no written testimony since the planning and zoning commission of July 21. And as I mentioned, the applicant's representative who in the school district, Matt Adams with Land Group is here. And unless you have any initial questions, Mr. Mayor, I'm done with my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Hood. Council, any questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perrow.
Is this the only parcel that's preventing Lanark from going completely through? I don't remember from the map and the staff report.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Perrow, no, there is one, you can't see the whole parcel, but there is an existing R1, which is a county's own property that hasn't really developed to its urban densities, again, it's not in the city, that then would connect out to Lanark and out to Eagle Road. So, yeah, there's still one other property in between.
Any additional questions? Okay, then with Matt, would you like to come forward on behalf of the applicant?
Good evening. Matthew Adams, 462 East Shore Drive, Eagle, Idaho. I do have a presentation. So, Mr. Mayor, council members, I'm really excited to be here presenting something that's east of McDermott Road. I think we're all looking forward to this.
Excellent. Thank you, Caleb. All right, so I'm just here to present on behalf of the owner. Why do we want to do a rezone? And we'll be pretty quick. The, the reason is that currently the playfield is where the baseball diamond is. So the students of this school walk across the parking lot, utilize the ball field, the outfield of the baseball field. When Lanark is extended through, that's not a situation that district staff wants to try to manage and monitor. And so this site is overdue for an expansion or a creation of a playfield that's adjacent to the school. They've identified that they'd like to do that on the south side. We met with staff, they laid out the option of a CUP, because we have a non-conforming use, or we could do a rezone. What we looked at is because we think we want to be able to do, we, the district, wants to do this and may have other projects in the future. Sometimes they had greenhouses or different things like that. But they also see the need for potential expansion of their maintenance facility in the future. So the decision was made, keep maintenance, keep north of Lanark as light industrial, rezone the school to support the playfield development. The, what would this playfield potentially look like? This is not an athletic field, this is not a sports field. This is a playfield for the students at the school. There are not athletics that are done on a field that are supported at this school itself. So these are examples that show the character of what this field could look like. Clearly, we have some grade change from Franklin down to the school, so there'd be some sort of treatment to manage that, that hillside. But this is the character, no lights, no lines, no striping, no bleachers. None of that athletic type of improvement. So that's what it could look like. And then finally, after review of the staff report, we have no objections to any of the conditions in the staff report. And we understand the point made by planning that at any time we do pull a building permit on these parcels, that would trigger the need to extend Lanark. The district understands that, so we're here to simply ask for approval of the rezone. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Council questions? Councilman Cavanagh.
Dean, I'm sorry, their buttons are Sorry, Matt, appreciate you working with us through our technology, my technology challenges. Is it contemplated that the public would have access to this field when school's not in session or not being, not using the field?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh, great question. Yes, all Meridian schools are open to the public. And usually only their football stadiums are fenced and locked. So this would be similar treatment to many of their schools. It would be open, just as the ball field is today.
Council, additional questions for the applicant? Thank you very much, Matt.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Quirk, do we have anyone sign up to provide testimony?
Mr. Mayor, we did not.
Okay, is there anybody present that would like to provide testimony on this application, or anybody online who would like to use the raise your hand feature to provide testimony? Seeing no one coming forward or raising their hand with the applicant, like any final comments? Okay, applicant has waved for any final comments, so council, do I have a motion to close the public hearing? Councilman Cavanagh.
If we close public hearing on item H-2022-0031. Second.
I have a motion second to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the public hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Pretty cut dry. Decided for the school, it's got a good track record, support a lot of Ford students in our community. Happy to see this progress. After considering all staff and applicant and public testimony, move to approve file number H-2022-0031. It's presented the staff report on the hearing date of August 23rd, 2022, include all staff and applicant testimony. Second.
Second.
I have a motion on a second. Is there discussion on the motion? If not, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Strater.
Aye.
Perrow.
Aye.
Cavanagh. Borton.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries, and the item is agreed to. Have a good evening, Matt. Council, next item up on our agenda is item three in public hearing for 10-mile public storage, H2022-0016. We will open this public hearing with staff comments.
Thank you. Once again, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is a proposal to annex 5.79 acres of currently zoned RUT land in Ada County to the IL, or again, light industrial zone, to allow for the expansion of an existing self-storage facility for two additional self-storage buildings. Again, the currently, the property is currently zoned RUT in Ada County, and its address is 4065 North 10 Mile. Between the existing self-storage facility and the subject property is a narrow strip of land, which is a portion of a 41-acre parcel owned by the city of Meridian. So you can see the majority of that 41 acres here in a square shape, and then there is a flag or a flagpole that comes out to 10 Mile Road that bisects what would otherwise be one contiguous storage facility if the subject annexation application is approved. There's an existing access to the the storage facility out to Ten Mile Road. And then the city uses the flag portion of this for, my understanding is for someone that's farming the forty acres right now. And we've been working with the applicant to consolidate their property and basically. Exchange, swap the the property on, that's the flag now currently on the south side for what you see highlighted in red. Through a property boundary adjustment through the county. That keeps their parcel whole and as far as the city is concerned, access is access and it's not as important. And then we can, they'll use one access to Ten Mile. And the gravel road that will be reconstructed with the swap can then also be used by properties to the north in the future as they annex and develop in the city. So once the the property boundary is completed, again, the city would would take ownership of. Essentially the same amount of acreage, just in a different part of the property for access. This, the, that that exchange and and the landscape buffer that would be otherwise required north to the just existing residential uses was discussed. During July twenty, the July twenty-first Planning and Zoning Commission hearing, staff had a condition for a five-foot wide landscape buffer. Along that northern boundary, the commission did strike that condition. And instead required the building, building B, I believe it is, to meet the architectural requirements listed in condition one D. That road essentially would serve as a physical barrier, but there wouldn't be any landscaping there. So the building would look nicer, be subject to design standards, but there wouldn't be any trees required. I will note, the applicant is proposing a fence along that property line, which does help with the screening and the architectural. Look there from neighboring properties. But that that is something that we had received some comments on email on eight-eight from Kathy and Andrew Griford. Which I understand is the prop, one of the property owners to the north who do oppose the request to eliminate the landscape buffer along the north boundary. So that's it in a nutshell. I will show you the conceptual plan. Again, this is just an annexation application. So things can change slightly, but this is the concept plan as currently shown. Essentially, the existing agricultural access that goes back to the city's forty acres would be paved. And then they would have access again for the, this next phase of the self-storage facility with the the two buildings that you can see highlighted here. So. There are some elevations. I think that's my last slide, so I'll just, I'll leave it there and I will stand for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Caleb. Counsel, any questions for staff? Councilman Cavanagh.
Caleb, that comment, that email that you referenced kind of caught my eye with the the feedback from the neighbors concerned about the landscape buffer. I see these elevations, I don't. To me, it just looks like another, another storage unit. And so I'm trying to, I guess, kind of understand what what you've just presented in terms of, we're going to make this look nicer. Versus the concerns of the neighbors about the loss of a landscape buffer. Maybe just trying to wrap my head around why removing the landscape buffer makes sense. I guess why you guys are recommending it and onboard with that.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh, just just to be clear, so staff did recommend the landscape buffer initially. The Planning and Zoning Commission is the one that actually struck that condition in favor of dressing up, if you will, that building B. I I don't know if the applicant's prepared tonight to address any changes to comply with the design standards or not. I can, I thought I could get to fairly quickly read to you. You know, the changes in horizontal, vertical, colors, materials, there is a condition in there. So again, you you have to kind of imagine, because I haven't seen anything necessarily, but again, maybe the applicant has. Some things are working on with the elevations to comply.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Perro.
Thank you, Caleb. So the property to the north is still in the county, but it is designated as mixed-use, non-residential, correct? So there's not, is that one of the reasons why that we should make consideration and not have a landscape buffer? Because there's not intended to be homes there in the future or from the. From that perspective, can you share your thoughts?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Perro, yeah, no, it's it's a good point and something that should be considered. You got to kind of walk that balance of respecting that someone lives there today. But yes, over time, it's going to be probably something very similar, a non-residential, industrial even type of use. So that is why I think maybe there was some, could be some compromise on a lesser landscape buffer, because maybe a full twenty-five foot fully. You know, landscaped out buffer over time maybe is overkill, if you will. You can also look, and I don't have a great, actually, I've got Google Earth up if you want, I can show it to just show where there's a couple of homes. One of them is near Ten Mile Road. And then one a little bit further back. Bear with me, I can kind of show you that, how they sit on the property and maybe what that will do. And that gives you a good gauge of how close to the property lines they are. But yeah, those are, those are something to consider. And again, why, maybe something in between twenty-five and nothing makes some sense or a fence and some building elevation. So I think it's a good point. And again, I didn't originally work on the staff report, so it's a little tough for me to defend what, you know. Staff's recommendation or the planning and zoning commission did, but I will pull that visual up for you all. So I will just say a disclaimer, I'm not quite sure how recent this aerial is. But it does give you a little bit of perspective to how close some of those structures are. So the subject property is right here and widens back out.
Caleb, the subject property is to the north.
Sorry, that's why I don't think the aerial is super. So there's the, there's the farm access road that we're talking about back to the larger forty. That opens up. So, you know, that we can measure how close the home is. Homes are, structures are, this looks to be the the principal dwelling on this property, looks to be an accessory structure here. So some separation from the larger building that's on the, on the west side of the property. Believe these are gone. On the subject site, but there's a home fairly close to Ten Mile and again, fairly close to that first building. Fairly close isn't an exact number, but again, just hope to give you a little bit of perspective on the lay of the land out here. Thank you, Warren.
Counsel, additional questions for staff? Okay, is the applicant here and like to come forward? You say your name and address for the record, be recognized for fifteen minutes.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff and residents. Aaron Anderson, representing Public Storage out of Glendale, California. It's equally loads up our presentation. So I have some slides prepared and then we can get into sort of some of the discussion you guys were having. I think I can shed some light on some of that conversation. Los Angeles. Thank you, Caleb. Okay, I'm going to give you guys a brief introduction to who Public Storage is and and how we operate. So our company was founded in nineteen seventy-two. So this year, we're proudly celebrating our fiftieth anniversary. And if you believe Wikipedia, we are the founders of the modern storage industry as you know it today. We're the largest owner-operator of self-storage in the world. And we have about three thousand facilities currently in our portfolio and that number grows every month. We operate in thirty-nine of fifty states. And at present, we have six active facilities in the state of Idaho. Three of those six are located in the city of Meridian. And it's important to highlight that this proposal before you tonight is considered an expansion. So once this project has been completed, that number won't change. So we grow our business in three ways. One is through acquisition, where we buy functioning stabilized properties and rebrand them in our image. We third-party manage, so public storage operates, but we do not own. And then new development, this is where we purchase property to facilitate new ground-up development. And on occasion, repurpose existing structures as adaptive reuse. So we're one of the few, if not the only self-storage operator that has a full in-house development team. That includes acquisitions, developers, architects, civil engineers, all working under the public storage banner. So jumping into the project, our timeline, we started this process back in October of last year. And we had a pre-app. Following that pre-app, we ended up redesigning our facility. We originally presented a three-story building. But what we're versing tonight is just a single-level development. We had a neighborhood meeting in February of this year. We discussed any potential concerns with our neighbors to the north. Those who did show up to the meeting were largely supportive of the project. And it remains fundamentally the same as it did some six months ago. Following that second pre-app, we submitted formal application, standing before the planning commission in July, ultimately ending up here before you tonight. So taking a look at the project aerial, you can see we're located along Ten Mile. It's currently developed with a single-family home, which has recently been vacated by the former owner. Directly to the south, that is our facility. And it's important to note that we have purchased the property and we closed escrow in October of last year. Looking at the zoning map, you can see we're currently in Ada County, zoned RUT. Our entire, the entire block here is essentially surrounded by the city of Meridian, so absorbing this parcel into your jurisdiction makes sense here. For some further context, you can see how the parcel fits into the future land use map. Remaining consistent with the current uses as well as the city's long-term vision for this particular area. You can also see the proximity of this facility, that little icon on the left of the screen there, that's the water treatment facility. Which makes this a good use type and good fit for this area. So looking at the city's growth area map, you can see this site is located in an area served by all necessary utilities such as water, sanitary sewer. Gas and electric power as well as fire department services. So here's a closer look at the aerial of the site, you can get a better idea of what it looks like in its present state. And then here's the site with the site plan that we're currently presenting to you tonight. You can see this proposed road location highlighted by the orange dash line, that's the access road swap. We worked with planning, Public Works and ACHD collectively came up with this proposal to deed a portion of our property in exchange for that. Sliver of road at twenty-five feet that's on the south of our boundary. So the benefits of this configuration, it eliminates a curb cut from Ten Mile. It allows for future access to the northern, northern parcels as development continues in this area. It provides a path for public utilities that will benefit our project as well as future and current uses. And it allows for uninterrupted access for the farmer who currently leases that farmland to the west. And for us, it creates that contiguous boundary between our existing property and what we're proposing. So this makes it a more seamless and true expansion of our facility. So here's a look at the building elevations. These are slightly updated from what you saw on the screen earlier. This was in response to the comments we received from the planning commission. So we added some articulation on that north elevation, which is the one up there on the top, that's our biggest building. And then we also added some additional interest on the east and west sides of the building. So with that, we've reviewed the staff report and we accept all the conditions of approval as presented. Our commitment here is to execute the development agreement to relocate and construct the access road at our sole expense. Provide that enhanced architecture on the northeast and west billing elevations. Install the utility connections from Ten Mile for the future uses to the north. And we're also committed to installing a security gate along that Ten Mile access point that we will ultimately install. And we have worked with the property owners to the north. And what we've agreed to is to install a privacy fence along their boundary. So north of the road to screen their view of our property once it's been constructed. And with that, we're requesting your approval tonight and thank you for your time. I can answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Perro.
What are the square footage is of the two buildings?
A hundred and twenty-five thousand gross roughly.
Together?
Together combined, yes.
Do you know the separate?
Individually, not off the top of my head, but I could certainly pull up a copy of the site plan.
So it's essentially like the size of a large Costco, size-wise.
I don't know what the size of a typical Costco is.
Hundred and twenty, give or take. Okay, I just wanted to get in my mind's eye a feel for. You know, the the actual size and the height of the, of the larger building.
I think it's eighteen feet to its highest point, so it's fourteen, I believe, to the eve, and then the roof is pitched. So I think it's eighteen to the top of the peak. They're not very tall. Very similar to what's out there at the property next door. It's, we're trying to match what we did at the property next door.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Could you walk through the architectural changes? I'm sorry, it just didn't.
They're subtle.
Okay.
But the previous elevation that you saw just had, I believe, bare CMU on the north. So if I could, I don't know if this mouse will help me out here. I can't point to anything. But the articulation is essentially EPHIS, so it transitions. This is our architect's attempt at satisfying and trying to establish a little bit of rhythm on the north side of the building.
So instead of just one giant wall that looks the same, I guess you have two different materials. But it's still, I I'm going to tell you, I'm I'm kind of struggling with elimination of landscape barrier. Even a small one with some trees, just because I look at this and, you know, I mean, we've seen some examples of self-storage where. They fit into the Ten Mile area and they really do have like truly architectural features. This doesn't really seem like it's changed a lot to me.
Understood, and I think there's some confusion about this elimination of the landscape barrier. So the conversation we had at planning commission was related to the twenty-five feet that we're deeding to the city. So we had a twenty-five, a twenty-foot access road. And the original proposal was five feet left over to landscape on the city side of the property line. So we still have room between the back of our building and the edge of our property line to landscape. That didn't affect what we're going to do. So it was really, do you eliminate the five feet and end up with a twenty-five-foot road? And that was the decision that was recommended at. At planning commission, if that makes sense. I hope that clears it up a little bit.
I, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Not quite. So are, are you then saying because we wanted the road to be wider that that went away? Or are you saying that you're still going to put in a five-foot landscape buffer anyway?
We have room on our side of the property line, so our buildings are not zero lot line. So the conversation at planning commission was related to the twenty-five feet dedicated to the city and the city wanting five feet of that. and the city wanting five feet of that dedication to be landscaped in addition to what we're going to do.
Got it, so, Mr. Mayor?
I think it was a maintenance question, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I think it was a maintenance issue that the city thought, or planning commission thought was not worth it. So the recommendation was to eliminate it.
So could, do you mind walking through your landscaping plan of what you intend to put in and how that might help satisfy the neighbors' concerns?
We don't have a full landscaping plan ready to present, but, I mean, you can see there's a little bit of buffer behind the building, so the dashed line, I wish I could point to what I'm talking about on the screen, it's very small. I don't know if I can zoom in either.
I, I think I see it, it's.
So you see the gap, I mean, look to the left of the screen where it says Building B. That's seven feet, I believe. So that area is available for minor landscaping, but we would certainly be open to planting something in the room that we have.
We could, I'm sorry, could it be trees? I mean, what, like, little, I mean, there's a difference between like little tiny shrubs versus something that's actually gonna screen the, the view of the building.
I would have to consult the landscape architect to, before I committed to planning something back there, but we would be open to coming up with a landscape plan during the CZC process that satisfied your concern.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselman Ho.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Aaron.
Nicolette Womack, Kim Lee Horn, one-one-zero West Idaho Street, Boise, Idaho, eight-three-seven-zero-two. I just wanted to add, walking north to south, from the properties to the north, there was concerns that Planning and Zoning Commission, no one would see the landscaping, because on the north property line of the road, there's the fence, and then there's a twenty-five-foot gravel road, and then there's another fence before you get to our building. They were talking about landscaping between the building and that second southern fence.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselman Ho.
Yeah, to follow up on the fence, then, Aaron, on the north side, so on the north side of the road, that, that will be the city access point, you, you have, you and the neighbors have agreed to install a, I'm assuming it's a six-foot fence, and have agreed to the type of fence, whether it's vinyl or wood or what have you, for that particular fence?
That's correct. So one of the neighbors is actually here tonight. We met this afternoon, I've been working with them, and we're working to get them an eight-foot fence through Ada County. Vinyl material, solid, just to, you know, preserve their privacy, so they don't have to see what's going on on the farmer's road. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
But that's separate from our fence, so, but really, at the end of the day, our buildings really provide security, so the need for a second fence with a seven-foot gap isn't really, you know, our current facility just sort of backs up to that access road. So we could potentially eliminate our fence, use that area to landscape, and soften the look of the backside of that building a little better.
Counsel, additional questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Mr. Clark, do we have anyone to send up to provide testimony?
Mr. Mayor, we did not.
Okay, if there's anybody present that would like to come forward and provide testimony at this time, if you'd like to do that, or if you're online, use the raise your hand feature, and we can bring you in for any comments. Come on forward, say your name and address to the record, be recognized for three minutes.
Okay, Larry Bowman, address is thirty-four seventy-five West Dock Lane. We have the property that's on the west side of their border. We're the ones out in the middle of the field with the barn and our house back there, five and a half acres. And really, there's only two bordering neighbors, us, Danny Madsen. He's, he's in agreement, we, we both agreed today that an eight-foot fence on our side, on our property, that they're gonna put in, would block that. So all we have is, is a nice fence down there, and I think, quite frankly, trees would be somewhat wasted in that space. I've got enough trees for everybody in here. The hawks love them and all the neighbors, and there really isn't anyone else, other than maybe the Whiskers family up there. All I have to say.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? And Mr. Madsen is online, in case he hasn't, would, wants to refute anything that was said, just so we know, he, he is here listening as well. Anybody else would like to provide testimony on the side of him at this time? Seeing no one coming forward or raising their hand, would the applicant like to close with any final comments? Okay. He's waving, they are waving any final comments, so counsel, I'll turn this over to you for conversation, dialogue, and closing the public hearing when necessary.
Mayor?
Counselman Ho.
Yeah, I'll just kick things off. It seems with the agreement with the neighbors for the fencing, and it is such a short, and it, having the road that allows access to city property that's under lease, and then another fence and just a short strip that I, I think it's adequate without the landscaping, and appreciate the applicant working with the neighbors and trying to reach agreement, and, and being successful in that makes our job much easier when that happens, we should happen more often, but I appreciate all that work, and I, I think it's something that we can, we can move forward with. So, Mr. Mayor?
Counselman Ho.
I would move that we close the public hearing for Ten Mile Public Storage, H dash twenty-two-two-dash-zero-one-six.
A motion, second, to close the public hearing, is there any discussion? If not, on favor or signature by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed name, we guys have it, and the public hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselman Ho.
Uh, I would, I'm trying to double-check here what the DA requirements are, but I think I'll just include the staff comments for the DA in, in the motion. So after considering all staff, applicant, public testimony, I move to approve file number H twenty-two-two dash zero-one-six, as presented the staff report for the hearing date of August twenty-third, twenty-two, and that all the staff comments for the DA be included in the, in the, in the motion.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, do I have discussion? If not, quick call the roll.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, Schrader?
Aye.
Pearl?
Aye.
Cavanagh? Gordon?
Aye.
Oakland?
Aye.
All eyes, motion carries, and the item is agreed to. Thank you very much, and Mr. Hood, again, appreciate seeing you back here. Next item on the agenda is item four, executive session.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselman Ho.
For Idaho Code, I move that we go into executive session for Idaho Code seven-four-dash-two-zero-six-one-F.
A motion, a second, to go into executive session, is there any discussion? If not, quick call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Schrader?
Aye.
Pearl?
Aye.
Cavanagh? Gordon?
Aye.
Oakland?
Aye.
All eyes, and we will move into executive session.